All right, we're going to reconvene here in open session, public session. We were upstairs in executive session, so sorry to make you wait a few minutes, but I want to thank everybody for being here. Okay, so the first item, are you ready, Dan? Or do you need me to wait?
Yes, no, no, I'm fine.
Okay, so the first item on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, and this covers some personnel items and some items under finance. Do I have a motion to consider the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted everyone to know that, so if you'll, if you can see now that they've designated all consent agenda items with a double asterisk.
Yes, thank you.
So they're, Sandra, well Sandra and Rosalyn both went to a board docs training, and really, there's no way for you to see what I see because there's only one person that launches the meeting and actually tallies the, it takes the roll call. So I can see something that you couldn't, and that would have been the easiest way to do it. So they, they've decided that moving forward, they're going to just do the double asterisk. That way you can identify what's consent and what is not, so I want to point that out to you.
That is amazing, and thank you.
Yes.
Thank you to them, and whoever came up with that idea is wonderful.
Good.
So do I have any discussion on the consent agenda?
I'd like to, I have a question about one of the items, permanent appropriations.
Yes, sir.
So this is, first of all, it says fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020.
That's correct. So those are the permanent appropriations for this current school year.
For this coming, good, okay.
Yes, so the nineteen, 2019, 2020 school year, so we passed a temporary back in June that was 25% of the previous year's appropriations. So this is by fund appropriations for the current 1920 school year. And if you look back, you'll see that the general fund, which is the one that you are generally most concerned with, at 121 million, is consistent with what is in the five-year forecast for the, for the school, current school year budget.
Got it. There were some changes I noticed, some of the things that didn't change and that did change caught my eye a little bit. One is the food services. So we made a change in our food services this year that was never promised to really change. It was more about staffing and that sort of thing. But are we to expect that the cost of food services overall will remain the same? Is that?
Well, the, that's, I think, I think the, more the expectation is there's an ongoing deficit, or there has been, that we've been carrying year to year in the food service program.
There is.
So I think, I think the hope is that that, that any additional profit in the food service program will serve to reduce the advance that we have to make each year as we move forward.
Yep.
And that ultimately, at some point in the future, will, that, that fund will be zero.
Got it.
Or, or at a profit.
Headed that direction.
Yeah.
Any guess how many years that might take?
I think it's going to be a few, because that, that advance tends to be, I think it's about a million dollar deficit that has, was even more than that, and has been reduced with AVI. You know, they've done a good job of actually working that down as we go.
So are you saying that the, we're so much in the hole right now, it's going to take a while to sort of build that back up to its zero?
It'll take, it'll take a few years before, yeah. Well, which is not, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, so the net, net every year is still, we're saving money.
Correct, yes.
Every year.
Yes. And, and, you know, it's not unusual for a district to run, food services tends to run at a deficit.
It does.
That's just, that's, that's a standard in schools. So the fact that we're 100%, and we're in the universal free introduced lunch program now, is a big help. And then AVI has been, and we've even been steering, you know, any, any kind of food services types of things that happen outside of the traditional school day. Also, we've, we've put with AVI because that ends up putting some money back in the food service fund for us.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Then, Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes. All right. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the tentative agreement with the monitors unit. This is the one item under personnel that is not, was not part of the consent agenda. So do I have a motion to consider the approval of tentative agreement with the monitors unit?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I had a question about the language for parental leave, but that was answered for me by Lindsay, so that question is gone.
I would just like to make a statement that I'm pleased that we were able to get an agreement with all of our unions, and I'm sorry it was only a one year, and that we are constrained by that due to the expansion of Ed Choice that we were not expecting. And I think it's, I, I respect our staff, and I'm sorry that we can only give a one year contract, and I know it's going to be unfortunate that we have to be back at the bargaining table again in a year. But I thank everybody who was involved in the process because everybody did compromise, and everybody had to give and take in order to make this work. So I just want to thank everybody who was part of the process.
Any other statements? Otherwise, Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes. All right, so that takes care of the business portion of the meeting, and now we are going to move on to our work session, and I am happy to welcome up our Family Engagement Task Force. So I believe, Lisa, you will be leading this portion.
Thank you, Jody. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, school board members and audience members. This evening, as the family engagement specialist, I'd like to introduce our family engagement plan and introduce you to the Family Engagement Task Force. So far, my work has focused on collaboration and providing support that ensures that family engagement is not a program but a practice, and that as a district, we are building the collective capacity for both our staff and our families. The capacity to strengthen homeschool connections for the purpose of increasing student success and school improvement. Tonight's targets include how the plan aligns with our strategic plan, introducing you to our Family Engagement Task Force, and sharing what we've discovered as the current family engagement plan. I'd also like to share with you some of our guidance, including an evidence and research-based approach aimed at building effective partnerships for student and school improvement. We'd also like to offer you an image of family engagement, and then give you an overview of our process and a vision for the current plan and its implementation. At the end, we welcome your questions. We really are asking for your feedback, and it's my hope that after tonight, as we move forward in this work, that we will garner your support and help us to keep moving forward with greater coherence, more focused direction, with a shared language around family engagement, and a clearer unified vision that helps the school district really amplify and share that family engagement has to be intentionally, intention, intentional, inviting and welcoming and listening to the families to ensure that we know, we welcome, and need them, and that the community is about supporting or being, the community is welcome into the journey of supporting educational outcomes. The strategic plan guided my work when I first joined the district, and I figured it sat snugly in strategic plan goal three. And I looked and I said, well, this is about parents and community engagement, where partnerships and community ensured as a district that we look at our, them as partners, and that we welcome them, and that they're fully engaged in supporting and enhancing student learning. Well, after researching other districts and examining what's out there and attending stellar professional development, I realized how much work as a district we still had yet to accomplish regarding the how we do that, and how much work is involved in what we measure or doubling down on what works. And with so many great things and great people, it became apparent that we're all working to better our schools. But how do we centralize that good? How do we protect brain space? How do we look at human capital and harness the energy of the human beings inside and outside of the district? Well, I'm pleased to say that good work immediately emerged, including offering family engagement training sessions during our district PD days, working more closely with various departments and building leaders, collaborating with our PTAs to localize leadership trainings, and finding opportunities to welcome new voices within the community where we can connect and share learning and resources and connections to what our district is accomplishing by ensuring that the district is hosting events like Common Ground that welcomes community conversations in collaboration with the Cleveland Foundation, and our Heights Family Academy, which is our version of the parent university. But it's also working on ways to understand the strengths and needs of our early childhood department and other various parent groups. But the more that I have learned, the more I see family engagement must be embedded across our district and can be aligned to better support the growth and understanding of each and every one of our strategic plan goals. It really crosses all of them. So I'm glad to say that when we know better, we do better, and that the collaboration across the goals will hopefully continue to deepen and widen as we continue to align and collaborate to propel the progress of our next five years plan. At this point, I'd like to introduce our Family Engagement Task Force members. All of them are not present, but this was the work that developed from goal three. So we formed this task force, and I'm going to have them say their names and share what they would like to. But it was born from goal three, it definitely was. But we wanted to make sure that we invited parents and community members literally to the table, and to ensure that they were bringing their diverse lenses, their support, their experiences, and to ensure that this work had a bigger view, and to ensure that we had more equitable outcomes. There was an application process where we asked them to submit who they were, why they wanted to do it, what was their why. And the selection committee ensured that we looked at the diversity of their experience, what they would bring to the table, how passionate they were, and encouraged new and existing leadership to participate. We considered past collaborations and worked to ensure representation from all of our schools and at various levels. So I'm excited you'll be hearing from the members shortly, but I would ask that each of them here introduce themselves now, and if they are a parent or an alum or both, and if any of them in the audience, would they just please stand?
In order?
All of you together. Do the Tiger Nation chant.
Tiger Nation.
So go ahead and say your name, please. Nancy Pepler.
Good evening. My name is Gabe Crenshaw. I am a parent of a seventh grader at Roxboro Middle School. I'm also a parent of graduates from Cleveland Heights High School, and I also graduated from Cleveland Heights High School.
Good evening. My name is Dana Flewellen. I am a proud parent of a high school, Cleveland Heights graduate. I currently have twins that are seniors, so super exciting, and I am a Heights alumna.
Hi, I'm Sue Hardy, and I have three Heights graduates in my family.
I'm Caitlin Kavanaugh. I'm the supervisor of communications. No kids in the district, not a graduate, but I love Tiger Nation all the time.
We let her in. Megan McMahon, Zenner McMahon, alum, parent of two kids, girls at Fairfax, and been in the district in various roles for about 19 years.
Sheldon Glave, I have, will have a graduate this year, high tide. I've been involved in the PTA for quite some time and graduates.
Hello, I'm Amy Cor Young. I am a most proudly Heights mom and employee of Reaching Heights that works closely with the CHUH families. I am an alum, very proud Tiger alum, and I'm working with our families with special needs right now in the district, and thrilled to be part of this task force.
My name is Michelle Gore. I am a parent of a eleventh grader here at the high school, and I'm also on the board of Reaching Heights.
So I think that's it. Nope, Desiree, I'm sorry, Desiree.
Desiree Caligore, mayor, Caligore Willoughby, long name. And I've played a role in various capacities in the district in the last six, seven years, and I really wanted to work on this because I'm very familiar with goal three since I crafted that with Angie Shaker five years ago.
So I'm very, very proud of the time that we spend together and the work that we've done thus far, and I'd also be remiss if I didn't mention that we had the support from an external facilitator, a consultant by the name of Ms. Sally Parker from Time Zero. I think she was here, but I think she skipped out. It was her birthday, so she skipped out. But I am proud that we've been meeting since November, and this is a beginning. It's a great plan, and I'm really proud of the work that we've accomplished. When they took the charge and they raised their hand to be a participator, thank you for nodding to my clickers. Thank you, Sue.
I got you.
They said that they would take on several goals. They were asked to accomplish the work of proposing an outcome-driven plan, a multi-year plan, review and update family engagement policies and programs, analyze and develop benchmarks for family engagement data, make recommendations on engagement strategies and supports for all stakeholders, and share the plan with the community, schools, and their various networks. So as we now embark fully, as we have a product, I know what we have to do is to continue to take this current plan and revisit it and refine it. It was built on what we know today, and as we know, communities change, the needs change, and the people in them change, as well as the changes in educational measures, means, and mandates. And so too, we'll, we need to take this plan and continue to shine a light on it and see where we are and what we have. We know that the national narrative around family engagement continues to emerge. It's a building reform effort that's really shifting in its priority. So we're talking 50 years in existence, and no one is saying that they have it exactly right. It's not a static area. Excuse me. So it's worth mentioning that what we know and what we agree is that we're doing some great things in this district. They're really amazing. So we really want to know that we're building on what's good and benchmark those efforts. So we can ask, what can we do better? What do we need to help strengthen? What should we continue to do? In all honesty, what do we need to stop doing? Engaging families is not a fixed point, but we can identify the best possible practices as our North Star. What we know right now and what this plan is built on was captured from and is best captured from this quote from the National Association for Family School and Community Engagement. It's more than just a caring teacher or a great principal. Family engagement is about every adult in a child's life working together to help them reach their full potential. I think that really says it best. And when we think about the research, and when we work towards effective family engagement, the research is powerful in what it results in. It's about students, teachers, and families. And I've also shared through Board Docs reference materials, including a report entitled "A New Wave of Evidence" by Dr. Karen Mapp and Ann Henderson, two canons in the work. They also could be potentially familiar because in 2013, we all embarked on a brief book study, and it was called "Beyond the Bake Sale." But I've also shared with you an article entitled "Organizing for Improvement" from the Chicago Press by Anthony Brick, the president of the Carnegie Foundation, which provides a wonderful example of the five essential supports for students, and is a case study worth examining as it masterfully talks about the human resource-intensive enterprise of schools and family engagement and community involvement, and the conditions that drive change. So if you look at the results in regard to students, they receive higher grades, higher test scores, enroll in higher-level programs, families feel more confident, they embrace multiple roles from co-creators, supporters, monitors, and models, and teachers report having more time to simply teach. And one of the things that stood out for me is that teachers often hold fewer racial and class stereotypes when we do it and we do it right. So I'm sorry that this is really hard to see, so I'm, again, hoping that you have the supportive materials. But this is, to me, a great compass. It's a great example, so forgive how hard it is to see on the screen, but I wanted to share it because this is one of the best depictions of a compass that takes us from where we are and helps us move to where we want to go. This is called the Dual Capacity Building Framework. It's kind of a mouthful, but the main author of this work, again, is Dr. Karen Mapp, who leads this work at the Harvard Graduate School of Education. Along with the team, they help practitioners, leaders, educators, and districts take a comprehensive look at the power of effective family engagement. Her framework has been lauded by the U.S. Department of Education and continues to be a beacon of intensive study and support for districts around the globe. I felt it was important to share tonight because when we identify the challenges, they're not just specific Cleveland Heights challenges, they're national challenges, right? And we also know that it's locally, nationally, but also with our neighboring, very porous borders. And so when we talk about challenges, I'd like you to look at what educators and families are showing with those two distinct separations identified by those tiny little dots. And what it says is that they were almost worlds apart, where educators are on one side and families are on the other. And educators have oftentimes not been exposed to strong examples of family engagement, and in, it's not in their coursework or in their daily work or their training, and they may not see partnership as an essential practice, and the strong potential comes to the table with a deficient mindset. Families, too, have not been exposed to strong examples, and they may be disrespected or feel disrespected, maybe even unheard and undervalued, and simply may not feel invited to contribute to their child's education. So this framework helps me examine our challenges, our district culture, our school climate, and helps us look at how we move towards effective partnership. It puts things into perspective, and it asks us as a task force, and as a task force, I'm sorry, we will continue to examine evidence-based approaches and frameworks as we learn and figure out how to help build capacity in this district. So I want to share a little bit about our process. When we embarked upon developing a plan, we looked at a variety of sources, and here's a list of the main sources, which included the data that was captured from our community and schools task force, the United Way Assessment, which included stakeholder interviews, surveys, focus groups. It also resulted in adding a community and school supervisor. We're sitting right here, right by. Ms. Nancy Pepler, who I am proud to say that has been serving on the task force, but she's also a daily collaborator with me. We employed a stakeholder perceptual analysis survey. We had about 538 families participate. We also had held community cafes, and of note is what Time Zero brought as the final feedback session called "A Data Capstone," where we presented the first draft of the plan and gathered input and feedback. I'd just like to pull a quote from this survey. What we discovered in this was that over 94% of both families and staff agreed that family engagement with schools is essential to student success. And the top five reasons was academics, student behavior, and mental health, helping schools better understand family expectations, concerns, hopes, and needs, and increasing families' understanding of schools' expectations, and families learning more about available resources, staff sharing, and information. Here is the visual.
Ta-da.
Ta-ta-ta-ta. I really wanted it to be something impactful, and I'm not sure that this is where we are. You know, it's almost there. It's like somebody needs to, I don't know, wave a magic wand and make it a little bit softer. But what we wanted it to be was a conversation starter. This is an image. It opens a conversation about family engagement and the plan. It's a draft model, but I thought it was important to have something that when people walked in the buildings or knew that we were working on this, that it was something that said very clearly, you matter, you're a stakeholder, and this is what we stand, stand for, and let's talk partnership. The thinking was that we knew this plan should be at the center of our district's core values of equity, education, and excellence. And we all also wanted to ensure that we looked at high-leverage goals, that were, they were not an end, but they were a beginning across domains and systems and could propel other goals by inviting a collective. Additionally, we wanted to identify current strategies that have been and probably will continue to be strong, vital, visible, and critical to the homeschool community. So I'm not sure what we'll do with it, but maybe we can put our brains together to figure it out. I'm going to invite Nancy at this point to help us begin to talk about the strategic plan. Nancy, could you take the?
Share the goals from the, from the committee. So as you can see, the, the goals that were created from all of this work that Lisa has described were culture and climate, and that is to build a thriving district-wide culture. Connections, that is to develop a highly connected district-wide community in support of student growth, whole child growth and development, and opportunity, creating those opportunities for family engagement and better connections.
I think it's worth mentioning that when we talked about culture, the feedback that was, that bubbled to the top is a shared definition, was that it was a culture grounded in a shared vision, values, and assumptions that promotes transparency, engages the voices of all CHUH stakeholders, and fosters trust, respect, integrity, equity, and collaboration. And when we talk climate, a climate that welcomes all and fosters inclusivity and diversity, bubbled to the top. At this point, I'm going to ask the task force members to talk about the strategies that they've actually been forming teams around.
So one of the integrated strategies that Dana, myself, and Desiree worked on was the feedback and communication, which is to establish protocols, practices, and processes that promote student and district success. So using the data from our stakeholder survey, we were able to share the preferred methods of communication between teachers, administrators, and parents.
I would like to add that the data that we gathered from the survey also implies that our district is on the, our district CHUH is on the right track, so that feels good. Yes, we must strive to instill more confidence in all our parents, that parents, guardians, I like to use both terms, that their feedback is not only relayed horizontally, but is being stretched vertically, reaching all necessary stakeholders.
Hi, guys.
All right.
How's everybody doing?
The double shift.
Yeah, we're just tagging each other up.
We'll have a triple shift.
We're all friends here.
We'll practice that.
Hi. So we wanted to talk a little bit, Sheldon and Nancy and I were actually on the strategy which discusses partnerships and community. And as a team, we sort of worked on addressing, looking at this, we want to sort of build on the concepts developed by helping recognize and strengthen, and where needed, build sort of healthy and engaged places in our district that meet our families right where they are, not where we want them to be. So we want to meet people where they are and then build on what we have, and then clear paths for partnerships, clear the path so that partnerships can flourish among our community, students, teachers, and families, all to the goal of creating and nourishing whole-connected children. You know, we want to meet people and find the things that are in the way and get rid of them.
Thank you, Amy. Partnership and community, that's what got me excited about the task force. That's basically some 101 stuff for me, you know, it's rudimentary. I've been a longtime member of this community, and I've always advocated for partnership, not only with students, not only with staff, but with also, you know, other community members. It reminds me of this time when my daughter was on the, walking in the street, and Brian Larissa was a cop at that time, and he pulled over and he was like, you know, don't, don't be in the street. And I was like, oh, thank you, Brian. I've never met him before, and at that moment, we talked, and he deputized like a bunch of kids on the street. I'm thinking, now here you have a police officer who's now a part of my children's life. That was huge for me, and that really encouraged me to, to partnership and community 101 stuff, right? Decided to join the PTA, and that was an intricate partnership in the community, but it, I realized that it was helping my children. My children would come to all the meetings with me, and I realized that they socially excelled academically, they did really, really well, and I realized that that was something that was, you know, helping with, with the development of the most important thing, which is our students. The, it also helped with the, and I capitalize all the letters in this word, the functional relationship with myself, my child, the teacher, administration, and staff, and, and other individuals. individuals in the community. I, I, I think, and one of the things that I thought about, especially with Cleveland Heights, my daughters have probably played every single sport there is while getting straight A's. So, you know, having this partnership with the community, having developed an engaged community with all the individuals involved also promotes, you know, this willingness to, to want to participate in other stuff. You know, I mean, they've, they definitely quit after, every year, like, "I'm going to try something else, and try something else." But it promotes that behavior and something that I think that we need to get back to and invest in.
And obviously, this strategy is something important to me and, and important to my work, but this strategy of building partnerships between students, staff, families, and community, it's really integral to school improvement. We believe that Lisa has shared some of the research behind that. And it's connected to the work that I'm doing on expanding partnerships with organizations to provide enhanced student enrichment and support. And, but there's no way that those partnerships with outside organizations can be successful if we don't have good partnerships with our families and with our staff. So it's all connected.
I was just going to roll up. They want me to be right here. So I worked on a team, events and programming with two other people, Leslie and Gina, and I have an event background, and so I kind of look at things a little differently. So we do a lot of events that are great, and we want to take an audit of all those events and programs and see what we're doing right, what we really put a lot of energy into that doesn't get a lot of return, and how we can do it better. And just really looking from kind of those points where kids come in, okay, when you come into registration, how's that work for you? How does it go in the building? Even when you switch schools from one elementary school to another school, that's a whole new world. How do we do with that? And, you know, they have their, schools have an own personality too, and how is that working? And then also from the, moving from an elementary to the middle, or the middle to the high school. We're not, I mean, I don't think we're really looking at sports booster programs and all the events they do, because I think they do them pretty well, and they probably wouldn't want us to touch those anyway. But we're looking more at district-wide and buildings, and how we do it, and how we welcome our families, and are we giving them what they really need? So, and there's a lot through talking with Lisa and Nancy and these positions that we can do some really cool stuff. So we're excited. I like to go super fast, so it's really hard for me to go slow. And, but we are, and they've helped me with that. Sue constantly reminds me of that. So that's what we're doing with events and programming.
Thank you, Megan. And we are not leaving sports alone, they're all included in Tiger Nation. So we want to make sure that. We're, we're looking at everything, but thank you, you're absolutely right. To, to look at those across the, the district is what our work includes. So they've joined their efforts as strategy teams, and as we move into the last portions of this presentation, we'll talk about implementation. We're now embarking on those initial stages of implementation, which is really about sharing the plan and getting feedback and building awareness. This shows each member of the, I'm sorry. Go back one. Thank you, Sue. This just shows the strategy teams, and each one of them are dedicated to focusing on those areas in, under feedback and communication, partnership and community, and again, events and programming. The first step in the implementation plan, again, is to speak with you all, but also share the plan with other stakeholders. We also did that at the Heights Family Academy this last Saturday, where we did a community cafe, which I would love to say was a huge success because we had more than 20 students participating at those cafe tables, along with some school board members, administrators, principals, teachers, and family members. So it was really gold. But we were able to, again, begin this implementation by putting it in front of people. And we'll also commence to organizing around our strategy teams and setting our goals and our plans in place as we audit events and look at what's happening. The strategy will focus on three primary groups, again, the family engagement task force, which we met today, our strategy teams, and eventually, we hope to have building-based family engagement teams. So the work is ongoing. Sharing the plan means that we're going to keep talking about it, collecting feedback, reviewing and refining it with groups and with individuals. This is a system-wide shift, but we are doing some stuff that's great. That was fine, Sue, you can keep going. Because what this slide does, it says that we're doing some things really, really well, and specifically around evidence-based practices. I've seen a shift from our PTAs that are now talking about transformative family engagement and making a shift towards whole child development. We've got a couple of our schools who raised their hand to be National PTA Schools of Excellence, which is built on the Epstein framework, the six pillars of family engagement, again, an evidence-based approach. I also know that in our early childhood centers, we are supporting the National Network of Partnership Schools. Some of you have probably heard of it as the Epstein model. And again, there's support, education, training, and school-based action teams that are working on looking at, how do we engage families and build a collective? I believe that our high schools foundation in a very new way is looking at activating alums and donation dollars to really impact the things that we're doing at our schools. Again, a district in full, fresh form of collaboration. And when I think about common ground and the things that we've done around community conversations, to me, it just means that we're ripe to build up these partnerships if we're speaking the same language and have a shared definition on how we welcome and involve families. So really, that's it. Again, I just want to thank you for your time. I think about the power of parent groups that we've supported in this district, including the Exceptional Children's Advocacy Group. Amy, I was counting on you to say that. You should have said it.
I should have said something.
That's okay, but Megan mentioned our booster groups, FAPO, BOPO, and the, the, did you laugh, Liz? It's funny to say, too. But it is the power of the groups. And so those are groups that we could go in and talk to, shop the plan, get their feedback. So we've got mechanisms. I'm encouraged by that. And then as we look at the community schools, schools task force with the work that brought Nancy into this position, there's hope that we have a lot of conversations to keep having about meeting the needs and moving, removing barriers. So we're coming from a strength-based position. So thank you for your investment and support of this work. That's our big picture to say thank you. So we'd love to open it up for questions if you have any, and if I can, I'm going to kick it to one of the team members who can.
Well, I just want to say thank you so much for your leadership and also for the team for your work. You know, I'm new and I'm learning, but I am really impressed with the level of commitment. First of all, I see all of you at like every event, so I don't even know how you have time to also be on this task force. But it really speaks to the health of the district when you do have a community of people who are really organizing around pulling more parents in and building on strong practices. And I'm, I'm struck by the different strategies. I think they really do hit all the different areas that need to be hit in order to really kick it up a notch. And I see things in your plan that align with even my own goals as a superintendent. So, you know, more to come on that, and more information I'll be asking you all in terms of those recommendations.
That's beautiful, thank you.
I have a bunch of things.
I have a couple of things.
Bunch of things, Jim.
Bunch of things. Well, no, I mean, it's, this is thought-provoking and it's, it's exciting as a board member to sort of see sort of the culmination of, of where you're at. I, I would have liked, so when we, as a board, and when we talked to Dr. Dixon about how this, this needed to really come about, you know, there were clear problems, and they're still problems. I, I think it would be helpful if we sort of start out in a presentation like this, say, "Hey, look, this is why this task force was formed, because we've got these particular problems." I'm real interested in understanding more about the benchmark piece. So I know that was one of the initial sort of takeaways of what we sort of expected. I'd really want, I mean, it's too early for that, I would give you, but I really want to see where that's at. And that's real helpful because when you come back and present again, you know, we can look at this, and we all sort of know, okay, well, day one, you know, day 365, you know, these are the things that we accomplished. You know, for example, we still have some broken PTAs. We have some leaderless buildings, but with, with very little PTA involvement. And that is one of many cornerstones that we absolutely need to find solutions for. So I'm real curious to see how, what, how that's going to, you know, play out. I was excited with Megan's comment about auditing the, the events. I mean, we do a lot of events. Some are just too many because you do have the same people that show up, and they're all good people that are showing up. But, you know, I look at what Noble did last year for their PTA event, where they, they called down all the events and they had one big event, and oh my God, that was like super home run. Just really, really great.
Sore end of summer, if you didn't know the name of that event. It was amazing. Patrick sits on our committee also, and I think that was definitely a fruit of collaboration right there. That was a perfect example. We could all learn from that.
Yeah, you put him in any room with a microphone and especially speaker system, and he just gets everybody all excited. So really want to see where equity plays into this. Just don't understand that piece. And equity is one of the things that we look at in anything that we touch in every decision. This success, you know, this effort will be successful or not, if it's been successful addressing our equity challenges. So really, really need to see that. I'm kind of curious about the surveys and the caps, the data capstone. Is that data that you can share with us?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that would be really, really beneficial. I think one of the things that we talked about in our last board meeting was putting together an additional community survey similar to the past triad surveys. And I'd really like to see where that data fits in to that. I know when we were at that, I want to call it coffee talk, but it wasn't coffee talk, although I was drinking coffee, but the, the event at the family. The cafe, thank you. The coffee cafe thing at the high school. Our group was talking about communication problems and how there were distinct communication problems, and how, so I'd like to see how we are going to solve that. I mean, if your survey is indicating that we're on the right track when it comes to communication, and I'm not talking about communication like a strategy, it's just like the vehicle in order to get there. Just real curious to see how that's all going to work out. Also, the power of the groups. That's a, that's a rare, I mean, that's good to hear. And also, I'm just curious to see if any work has been done in analyzing Open Doors model. Now, I've been in meetings where community members have said, "You guys need to do more what Open Doors does." Well, Open Doors, we know, is a very selective organization. It's very successful, but also part of their group, you know, part of their methodology is really embracing the parent. So I'm just kind of curious to see if there's one-offs that we can do that are similar to Open Doors' strategy. And I don't know how that would play out.
Um, we haven't been asked, I'm going to let Jim get all of his stuff off the list, and if we need to compile or reply to them, I think that would be the best use of time. So hold on.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. I think the best thing to do is taking some notes, and that we just reply to you all as a unified board. That's okay. The feedback is great, and I think, you know, you're helping us to look at things a little bit differently, too, and this is what we want.
I think we did address the...
You come up to the microphone, so it's...
Yeah, I think Dan was going to talk to you.
Yeah, we don't want to answer them all specifically tonight.
I don't want to answer all of them, trust me. But you did bring up a great point that we talked about tremendously in, in, in our task force meeting, and it's that whole approach to customer service, engaging the parent from a customer service standpoint, understanding that that kind of approach is probably going to bring forth a more engaging parent. So we talked about that for several of the meetings, and that's something that we're, we're going to work on.
Well, that's a good point, and one of, someone on your mention talked about the new student registration and that whole process. I mean, we know that is challenging for new parents. Okay? It's gotten a lot better. It's gotten a lot better from what we've heard, but we still hear complaints about it.
Absolutely. Those are fragile points and touchpoints that we can drill down.
Also first point of contact for a new family.
Absolutely.
So it sets a tone for everything else afterwards. You would agree?
I, I, I appreciate the work that you guys have done, because I remember I was, I was on the board from the beginning, and I, I think you have done a phenomenal job with the, the committees and, and the research that you've done. I want you guys to keep doing it. I do like the fact of the, the building base. I can't wait to see that. And, and what type of strategies or what type of support we can give to our PTAs to build our PTA programs and, yeah.
That PTA is a powerful piece, it really is. And I'm often struck by the commitment to leadership, you know? What does that mean that, you know, 20% of the people raise their hand to be leaders? And when you talk about PTA, there's participation and there's leadership. And not many people want to run a small nonprofit organization with bylaws and 990 filings and committing. And we ask our PTAs to be event planners, recruiters, volunteers, you know? And so I think we do have to look at our model. But we know that PTA is that first rung when we say a new parent or a new family come into a district. We should be able to readily respond as a PTA equitably across our district with each of, in every one of our buildings, that that's an opportunity to volunteer and fundraise. And, you know, I think lead. And so I think we do have to look at, and thank you for bringing that up, both of you. We all believe in PTAs, and we think they're valiant in the things that they do to support our schools. So we'll continue to support them and help figure that out.
You know, it seems to me it's like the core. So if you're part of BOPO, you certainly should be part of PTA. If you're part of any sports booster organization, there's some PTA component to that. It just seems like, and there should be some easy exchange of information between the two. I mean, because we're all trying to fundraise, we're all trying to be a part of stuff, we're all trying to get people into a building to a PTA event that's critical. And if there's some child, some leader, or some person that's in some other organization, that's okay, but, you know, is there a way to share that information from a...
I think we have to figure it out. I think, Jim, you're, you're hitting on some really good pay dirt. Because I don't think when you get to the high school, it is as cut and dry as it is for our middle and elementary schools to define family engagement or that access point of PTA, because we have so many groups. For the last few years, what I've tried to do is bring those leadership positions to one luncheon or breakfast to say, "Let's have a conversation." So we do know what our shared goals are. And so we broke bread a couple of times at the high school with all of the groups, and I kid you not, it was more than 78 people that I invited to come and have breakfast. And oftentimes, they did not know each other, and in some cases. So it, it seems very simple to say it's all PTA, but I think we may have to shift our definition of what parent-teacher association looks like at different levels, and/or create a lane that says at high school, these are the things that we're working on, and it may be to bring and convene those splintered groups together, or support the parent responsibilities, I don't know, like after prom, and the things that you don't necessarily know that you're responsible for. But I know we have a lot of work to do, and I think this conversation has to keep going. So, you know, I don't know how often I'll be invited, but I definitely want to keep sharing the updates, because we are looking at benchmarks. And some of it is kind of low-hanging fruit, and things that where, you know, parents and staff meet each other. You know, I hate to bring up Infinite Campus, but I think it's one of those really great examples of where we have information accessible, and we can say if we're at a 78%, how do we move it to a 99 or 100 and set those goals? Or 60, 60, like where are we with that? Yeah, 60%. And so if that's where, communication is a great tool, and I've seen our district push the parent portal to have a parent notification, which was something we talked about as a task force. And so that means if Infinite Campus is updated, you get a ping, and so it defeats that whole question of when do we meet there as families and staff? And so things like that, I think it's just changing the culture of our district, and we just have to keep shifting it and looking at the places where we can meet together and keep thinking we're building partnership with parents.
We had a parent on Saturday that didn't even know that Clover was, was around, for example, clever, clever.
A lot of parents don't know about Clover.
Yeah, it's like, wow, I mean, that's just like this magic glue that you guys have figured out how to implement with everything.
Clover is amazing.
But it's another platform that we're, I'm seeing our Title I leads in our buildings really share those access points for families that are remote. One of the things that we're going to try to do, which I haven't really ran past CATHEN, so it's probably not 100% fair to say it, is that the people who were not in attendance at Heights Family Academy, how can we make those accessible? You didn't have to come and sit in the session, but you should still be privy to the information. So part of it is having that remote access. Something somebody mentioned in one of our strategies is touchpoints, is communication. And so an event can be a remote... And so an event can be a remote event, but the main thing is that we're building the capacity. So, and we've got a lot of great expertise and opportunities to share, so how do we make sure that they're visible and accessible?
I'll say I have a couple of comments as well. First of all, I wanna thank the task force. Having served on task force, I know how much time and effort you've put into this, so thank you very much. I certainly hope engagement, you know, we, we're looking at refreshing our five-year strategic plan, 'cause it's getting, you know, stale. It's getting towards the end of five years. I certainly hope engagement remains a cornerstone of that. I did have a couple of comments and questions, and they're kinda all mixed in, so take notes. And if there's something to answer tonight, great, and if not, um, maybe we can get an answer in the future. I believe it was Gabe who had talked about, um, preferred communications methods. I wasn't quite sure, have those been identified, or is that something you guys are working on?
So I think we're, we're working on them, and they have been identified. So, you know, I think we looked at the responses, and it tended to be email and phone calls and face to face. So, you know, again, if we're looking at practices and strategies, having the opportunity for teachers to say, oh, those are the preferred. How do we make sure that those are identified and utilize them is sort of where we're going.
Okay.
And they weren't always the same for the teachers and the families.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure.
To get things to line up.
Yeah, things to line up. Yeah, absolutely, I'm sure. 'Cause that's one of the things that I've always been concerned with. I feel like the communications that come out of this building, out of Cathan's office, out of what was previously Scott Wirtman's office, have been fantastic. It's often what comes from the buildings that I think could use improvement. Megan, I love the idea of an event audit, so thank you. Go, run as fast as you can on these things.
As a working parent, every time I'm like, okay, we'll go to that one.
Yeah, I get it, I get it. Most of us were at events all weekend for the school district, from Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
And it was fun.
It was fun. But it was exhausting.
Exhausting.
And then there was the music hop.
Yeah, and then there was the music hop. One thing that I was kinda surprised as engagement wasn't mentioned at all, and I hope it hasn't fallen off the radar, is KinderNet. I don't know where that belongs, but boy, that is something that it was lost over very quickly.
It was on there.
We need, we need to get that back up going. That was one of the best things our district had for a long time, and I, I really appreciated. And then, as far as transitions, we talked about transitions between buildings. And yes, definitely key. One of the things that I know that the orchestra did last year, and I'm just gonna mention it as an example, 'cause it was so fantastic, was they had the orchestra stu-, uh, eighth grade students shadow a high school student, and then they played a concert with them in the evening. It was amazing. I think every organization that has some kind of connection, you know, whether it's the robotics teams or, um, Model UN teams or whatever, ought to do something like that. Okay, data point of, you know, my son and his friends, but from that day on, they were so ready for high school. And that was like in November.
Right.
So there's a little bit of, yes, you do have to finish eighth grade before you can go to high school. But just the excitement it built among the students to be going to high school was fabulous.
The orchestra shadow also, you know, had a tremendous effect on the current high school students.
Oh, that's interesting.
There was a fair amount of pride in showing, you know, the young kid what it's like.
That's cool.
I, I got some of that feedback at my house. I was like, okay, neat.
That's really neat, yeah.
So anytime there's something where the older students are mentoring or showing off for the younger students, you're getting a benefit in both directions.
I appreciate, if I can just say, I appreciate your point to discussing transitions in general. I'm really glad to take that note internally to bring back.
Okay.
Because, especially working with populations with special needs, those transition points are very stressful for families.
Absolutely.
Communication can fall, um, it can very easily fall off the, the map. And I think that that's a really important thing to, to bring back, and I appreciate that.
Absolutely, and even transitions from, you know, fifth grade to middle school is another huge, you know, I know.
All of those big transitions.
One of the things that we did, um, when I was at Garrity was we had, um, it was after Wiley closed, so we were gonna be going to a new middle school, and many of the parents didn't even, you know, had never even been there. And we had Monticello PTA parents come in and speak to us. And that, you know, it was Katura Simmons, it was Marcy Denton. It was fantastic, because it just helped all of us feel like, oh, you know, you, the transition, and now I know some faces, and I understand how it works, and I know, and it was just a relief to be able to have that. So I think anything we can do to focus on those transitions from this group is fantastic, so.
That's a good start. Historically, that was a Cleveland Heights, uh, plan. We did that always in the seventies, eighties, and even early nineties. Elementary school kids shadow. It was district-wide. Each school went one day, and you shadowed with, uh, so we could, I'm sure, transition back.
I think that's called best practice.
But even, I mean, even beyond the kids going, it was parents coming to PTA meetings, which also helped.
Kids get transition services a lot. A lot of, the kids get a lot of transition, but where, where things can fall off of, like I said, fall off the map is where the parents aren't aware of what's gonna be happening. Parents don't know who the next team, what they look like, who they are, what the services are, what the extracurricular opportunities are. I think it's just a really valid and, you know, an important point, one we talk about for sure, but that needs a lot more work.
And I have to just put in a quick plug for Reaching Heights Music Camp. Because I can tell you, one of the best things that helped my son transition was doing music camp in fifth grade. So he met a bunch of students who were already sixth graders, seventh graders. And it made the, the transition to middle school so much smoother. So thank you for, for, you know, beyond the task force, community organizations who do those kinds of transitions and help that. Thank you very much.
I think you raise a great point, too, in regard to transition points, and parent-to-parent support has been a key conversation. Um, and you mentioning that those high school parents going to middle school parents can help allay some fears. And so I think we do have to look at, you know, our model for Heights Family Academy. We knew that welcome to middle school and meet me at high school was gonna be really important, because sometimes those one-off nights of, here's your orientation, this is what it means to be a high school parent, are missed. So how do we make sure that we're looking at even something, a, a district event, where we make that nominal investment of transportation, childcare, food, and really build those things in, is it again either replicable or accessible for families? Um, and continue to know that, that it's not just about the kids, 'cause they are getting some of those services, but how do parents speak to other parents? So I think that, that's really great feedback. Thank you for that, Judy.
Thank you.
So, um, I didn't borrow a pen until too late in the game, but, um, Bev always saves me. A couple of things that hit me, just, you know, is I had KinderNet also on mine. And, and we as a group, as a body, talk a lot about KinderNet. And, and we have a strong desire in bringing that proven program back to life and better than ever. A lot of what I was hearing, as you all were sharing, is, um, really the explanation for the fact that our district is growing while unfortunately, many of the districts around us are shrinking. You know, we are in the second year of about a two percent growth. And, you know.
Preliminary data.
Preliminary data. And N of two doesn't necessarily make a trend, but, um, but a lot of, of what we're hearing is exactly that sort of thing. You know, ever since I was in school, I've called it the boogeyman complex. You know, that, um, every kid is convinced on some level, and the same thing happens where I teach, that the boogeyman is around every corner at the next school. And, um, and we are sort of, all of the, the interactions that we're doing with, you know, kids shadowing removes the boogeyman. I remember very well, when I was in fifth grade, height singers came and performed at Coventry Elementary School. And I'm here to tell you, that day, I decided I would be a height singer. And, um, you know, that, you know, and so then, as a really non-sophisticated fifth grader, I realized, okay, what do I need to do between now to get there? And, you know, these are the things that, from a student's perspective, mean the world. I'm also really interested in the communications piece, and, and I'm interested in it on a couple of levels. One, I think the infinite campus piece is, is so very important. And, and when I say that, I mean, uh, getting as close to universal access and use as possible. But then, I wanna know from users, parents and students, um, satisfaction. Their, their satisfaction with its being, um, used by the teacher. You know, and, and so I'm looking for some best practices on that end as well. Some assignments are easy to get in quickly, some assignments take more time. The assignments that take more time can be marked as turned in or missing, though, on day one. So, so I really wanna know more than just a percent of who's using it. I wanna know how they're using it, and I wanna know, um, what their level of satisfaction is with it. And as, as close as we can dial into that number as possible to build best practices. I don't even know what clever is, and I think I'm on the Board of Education. So, I'm not feeling real clever right now.
I was just looking it up, Dan.
Okay, there you go.
He was in one of the, um, well, you gotta, you've gotta get in the district.
That kid's not clever either.
Once I looked it up, I remembered it, it being presented to us, but I had forgotten, so I had to look it up again.
Login system, is that right?
Yeah. It's the portal that has all of the applications, single sign-on.
So as a parent, you're getting this login, this login, this login, this login, and you're like, okay, where am I keeping all those login sheets? Well, now you go to clever, the student has one login, and it pops up all of the online resources we have.
Like the online textbooks and?
Yeah, A to Z, I mean, the younger ones who use it a ton for prodigy and all that. So it's very helpful, and helpful for them, 'cause they're not like, which one's this and which one's that.
One of the things about equity that, that, um, came up in my mind is, I was working at a, um, uh, Ice Cream Social a couple of weeks ago, just helping out. And it was a great opportunity for the PTA to sort of bring in new families. And one of the questions that I heard over and over again is, well, I work. You know, are, are your meetings during the day when I'm at work? And, um, this PTA, and probably all do, you know, they, they change their meetings. One month it's this time, and another month it's this time, and that sort of thing. So I was really thrilled that we're doing that, uh, important work. Final thing that I have that I think is worth stretching a little bit is the alumni network piece, um, that Megan mentioned briefly. I think that we have got a great deal of low hanging fruit leveraging the power of our alumni. Who want to, to help, want to be used. And I know that that's, um, a developing priority of our Heights Schools Foundation as well. So, um, the community of communities, um, is exciting.
I'd love to hear when, um, we intertwine the conversation of equity and engagement, 'cause most of the trainings that we've gone to, they are looking at their two sides of, of the same coin. And when we talk about engaging and empowering families and making sure that we're equitably making sure all students are successful, I think we have to be careful not to just pivot it immediately to PTAs. Now, the thing I will say about that is, they're great, and they're wonderful mechanisms for engagement. But I run this sort of tape that we have to ask our PTAs and the people who are working on behalf of our district, volunteering, supporting, and fundraising, that they also look at their practices, that we examine who's not at the table, what families are not being represented, what programs are we employing to really reach all students? And so I kinda keep saying we have to ask our PTAs to face outward, because there's tons of tools that we can use to bring families who are not running a nonprofit into the conversation of educational outcomes and support. Um, and so I think they can sort of help us really close some of those gaps in achievement or opportunities or access to resources. And I think that's a conversation we need to keep having go, uh, go forward. Because to me, equity is about access, opportunity, and achievement for all.
Dan, you made a comment about, uh, the Alumni Association and Communications.
Heights Schools Foundation.
Heights Schools Foundation, you were absolutely right, okay? Okay, I just, it's like tattooed in the head, and I can't erase it. High School Foundation. But when a child, um, when a family leaves the district because they graduate, it used to be that the, uh, communication to that family stopped, it just rolled off. And a while back, I asked our communications department, what's the policy on that? Can you look into that and get back to us on what that is? 'Cause ideally, we'd still like to have them get newsletters, for example.
Can I speak to that for once? I have, just, okay, 'cause I'm on that board also, and kinda been on for a while.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure that's an Alumni Association, but go ahead.
Well, in a way it is, because we take the district, we take it from the district, we keep it. They get our newsletters, at least from the Heights Schools Foundation. And in that newsletter, we include other things that are going on the district, 'cause the newsletter is now K through, the foundation is K through twelve. So we do put it in there, what's going on in the district, and they all are, it goes to their addresses. The issue being, and we, now, social media and, um, the website is probably actually the best, because when they move, they move. So when we keep their email address, we have their email address. So it helps. And then with their ten-year reunion, they always come back, and then we update everything as they go.
Okay, but the families, though, 'cause when my daughter graduated, my last daughter graduated, we stopped receiving all communications as a family.
Yes.
And I think we do need to check on that.
Pay into your dues, you could.
Well, it's not, I mean, we're not an alumni, though.
Right, but you could be on the website and get an email and get the newsletter.
Yeah, but you gotta sign up again.
Yeah.
So you're saying, Jim, how can we roll over? You're automatically an alum. If you're a graduate, that makes sense.
'Cause we hear a lot of the opposites. Like, I've done, my kids are gone, I've gotten six newsletters sent to my house, 'cause all my six kids, so I mean, there's, there's a fun.
I mean, there can be opt-in, opt-out.
On the e-newsletter, you can always click on the unsubscribe link at the bottom. I've heard from several parents that they want to continue receiving the district calendar in the mail, even though their kids have up and outed. And I think that's very interesting, because it does provide you a visual object on the wall that is a connection to what's going on in the buildings. It's quite interesting that.
I am happy to mail a calendar to anyone who has.
Now, what I've also discovered is that all you have to do is go to the community center and take one from the big pile.
If I may, like, I think what Jim is saying, what I'm hearing at least, is that we may be missing opportunities to, just to, to build, to keep nourishing the relationship we have with our families. There should be no reason that they fall off, just because they graduate, because they're still our community members.
Right.
And, and that, that we wanna, I, what I'm hearing is that you just wanna make sure we're considering that nourishment. That continues to be, and I think it's really valid.
Yeah, they shouldn't have to go find you again with all, everybody trying to communicate with them.
Other than nitpicky things, yes, there are, there are mechanisms, yes, we can collect the thing, and yes, we can do the thing. But what are we doing to actively nourish?
Right.
That.
We need to reach out when there's not a levy on the ballot.
Right.
Right, exactly.
Just saying it out loud. That's, we hear that. You know, the only time we hear about you guys is when you want money. And, and, okay.
Fair, fair. But I think we end up trying to chase the tail of these, you know, connectors, when we could just simply try to maintain them. And so you're making a very good point, that if they, they shouldn't fall off the rolls, and how do we do that?
Right, it's a lot less work to keep somebody on your subscription list than it is to go find them and update stuff and put them back in again.
All right, everyone. This was great conversation, but we're at eight fifteen, and we still have a data presentation, and I know how this is gonna go. So thank you, Lisa and team, thank you, um, Family Engagement Task Force.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
So, as Allison sets up, one thing, um, that we're doing is adding more data presentations to the work sessions. You know, the data, what I have learned is the data are dense, in Ohio, the report card and all those, um, measurements are dense. And so this session here ser-, will serve as an overview to be followed by a part two. Where we'll do a deeper dive into, you know, individual school performance. We wanted to give you an overall snapshot, because the report cards did just come out. To give you the con-, some context of, you know, performance of, you know, first reen districts. You'll see, this'll be snapshot data. One thing that, um, Allison and I will do, kinda similar to Lisa's, collect questions that come. One thing that Allison and I will do, kind of similar to Lisa's, collect questions that come up for you so that when we do have that second session, we can make sure that we have targeted information when we revisit. So, this is part A, or part one, and there'll be a part two and three and four.
All right, well, thank you. Good evening. To get started, you should have a packet of handouts at your, at your tables by your nameplates. So, just to run through those really quickly so that you know what you have, you don't necessarily need them this evening, but they're available for you for future reference. So, on just this past Thursday, September 12th, the Ohio Department of Education released the Ohio Schools Report Card and our Career Technical Education Report Cards. So, on the top of your packet, you have the Tri-Heights Career Prep Consortium Report Card and the grades for those four components. You also have a portion of the 2019 Guide to Ohio's School Report Cards that the Ohio Department of Education publishes. So, this is available on their website. But again, it gives you some information about each one of the report card components. Then you have a one-pager. In the upper left-hand corner, it says, "Overall Report Card Grade Calculations." So, I'll be talking about the district's overall grade. And here you just see how that overall grade is calculated at each one of our levels. So, that's the green side. And then on the flip side, you have actually the breakdown of district performance in 2018 and 2019. The last set of papers you have is actually a packet. So, it is the report card information for each one of our schools. And again, you have 2018 performance and 2019 performance.
This is the same document that was shared with us about a week ago.
It's a slightly nicer format.
Yes, Allison put it in a nicer format.
It's, I don't have to go highlighting the two different years to figure out what's what. Excellent.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It makes it easier for you to read it, that's one of my goals. So, tonight, again, we're going to, I'm going to do an overview of just the district's performance on the six components of the state report cards with the intention of gathering questions and identifying areas for further discussion in the October work session and then the ones to follow after that. It's always important for us to have a few guiding questions in mind as we review our test results or our report card results. They help us put our information in context and give us greater understanding of what the data means. So, our three questions are, how do we perform compared to the goal, right? What's, what was the target? What's an A, what's proficient? Second question is, how do we perform compared to others? So, I reference how other districts across the state performed and then also how other districts in the first ring performed. So, these are the districts just outside of the city of Cleveland. And then the third question is, how do we perform compared to ourselves over time? So, we can look at that two different ways. The papers that you have is, is actually usually referred to as the apples-to-oranges comparison. So, we're looking at different groups of kids performing along the same, or along tests. Like, how did last year's third graders perform compared to this year's third graders? There's also the cohort comparison, which is described more as your apples-to-apples. So, how did the kids do in third grade? And then that same group moving to fourth grade, how did they perform? And then moving to fifth grade, how did they perform there?
Allison.
Yes.
Can we also, so our, we have, the transience in our district is significant. Do we have also a measure of, I don't know even what you call it?
Mobility?
Well, I'm interested in, in students who have been in the district for a number of years separate from students who are newer to the district from, is, I don't know what the term, do you? I think you understand what I'm asking for.
I understand what you're asking.
So, you're looking at performance of students who have entered the district and been with us, say, since kindergarten versus those who may have entered later on in their schooling? Like, like I, like I came in as a first grader.
Right.
So.
Or, or even for, you know, we've, we've set a, if there's an industry standard for a number of years, if we're talking about measuring against ourself, measuring against ourself isn't actually always measuring against ourself.
Well, with an approximate eighteen percent annual mobility rate, yeah, you're right. I mean, but I still wouldn't know if that eighteen, if that eighteen percent number's real. And then, is it mobility within the district, moving from Canterbury to?
Which there's a great deal of as well.
Yeah, so it's like.
Duly noted.
Just to be clear, is your question about mobility within the district or is your question about, you know, students who are, I mean, lifers, you know, like, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and we can even define a lifer.
Yeah. Is it one year, two year, three year, four year?
Right.
So, so one of the things that, Allison, you've heard this before, but in the past, community members would tell the public, if you've been in the district for three years or, three years or longer, you're above proficient. Okay? It's somewhat degrading the kids that are coming in who are, have, who have a lot more mobility. I'm not sure how we feel about that. But, you know, the issue here is, if you look about the performance of the school district, if you stick with us, you know, move around, you're going to be just like all the eight districts.
And I'd just like to know if that's actual, actually true.
We don't know, that's what.
But it is certainly something that we hear a lot.
So, given this new data, what do we know about that measure? All right.
Okay.
You did a good job answering that last time, I forget how you did it.
I don't recall either, so I'll review my notes.
Just saying.
I do remember preparing some information that was shared probably close to the end of, of the school year last year. So, I can pull that back up. All right, so with our 2019 report card, the Ohio Department of Education measures schools and districts across six components with ten graded measures. Three of them are based on students' performance on our state tests. So, those three components are the achievement component, progress and gap closing. And again, those tests are administered beginning in grade three through the high school. One component, improving at-risk K-three readers, which used to be referred to as K-three literacy, looks at our ability to get students who are identified as not-on-track readers to being on-track readers after a year of instruction. We have the Prepared for Success Measure that looks at multiple items to indicate how well-prepared our graduates are, either for further education or for work after high school. The graduation rate, of course, measures how many students meet high school requirements in either four or five years. So, with both the Prepared for Success Measure and the graduation rate, it's important to remember that they are referring to students, that the information is actually a year behind, a year to two years. So, when we're talking about, or looking at the 2019 report card, that actually reflects graduates from the 2018 and 2017 cohorts respectively. So, sometimes it's easy to get that confused, but both of those components, Prepared for Success and Graduation Rate actually go a year behind. The same thing is true with our Career Tech Report Card. So, those also look at graduates in the four or five years being a year behind.
Allison, in a future presentation, can you just explain why? So, we'll meet, meet with you again. I mean, why, why is it delayed two years?
I can give you a very quick answer. So, it actually allows students who don't complete graduation requirements in June of the, the year. So, those who graduate in, in August, so we had a ceremony for our graduates in the 2019 class, they can actually be included in that four-year marker. And then also for the Career Tech Report Card, it allows us to follow up to see what actions they take in after graduation. So, with, with the Career Technical Report Card, one of the markers measures whether students have attained certain industry credentials. The one that comes to mind offhand is our, the students in our Cosmetology Program, they actually don't take their board exams until after they complete all of their coursework. And that usually happens as, as seniors. So, it allows districts extra time to find out, or districts to find out what's happened with their graduates in the case of the Career Technical Education Report Card. And then for our traditional Ohio State Report Card, it gives us more time to make sure that students who graduate in the summer are included in that initial grouping.
So, on the Career Tech Report Card, is it the post-program's outcomes component which has a year lag?
It's, it's. It's measuring performance of students overall, so that this would reflect the graduates from 2018 and 2017.
In post-program's?
Post-program's, graduation rate, achievement and career post-secondary readiness.
Okay.
So, do all five schools, I'm sorry, good.
No, that's fine.
Do, do I five schools share the same report card?
Yes, the schools that participate in the consortium are included in the, in the same report card.
Right, so we have Shaker Kids and Maple Kids.
This one actually reflects the, the three, so Warrensville, Shaker and, did I say Warrensville? Shaker, us and?
Warrensville.
Yeah, it is Warrensville.
The old, the old Tri-Heights.
The, the, the original Tri-Heights. So, we won't see the five-member data. I think it's going to be for another, another year.
So, one quick question, as I was reading through all of this and it's so confusing the way the state just tabulates this whole thing. But when, does data, if a student moved to another district, would their data, with their information, say for instance, like, say this, this kindergarten assessment? And say they didn't stay for the entire year, they went to another district. Would their data move with them? How does that work? Or do we still calculate their data in our system or?
So, the, the quick answer is when a student leaves our district and enrolls in another district, then their results, their data, go with them.
Okay.
So, for the, the, when you referenced kindergarten or first, second, third grade that are included in the, the K-three measure?
Yes.
That in order to be included in that component, the student actually has to be with us for both administrations of their reading diagnostic test that's used in that measure. So, they have to be with us from September of, in this 2019 measure, they were with us in, in September of 2017 and Sept-, or excuse me, September of 2018 and September of 2019. So, they have to be with us for a full year.
Okay.
So, if someone, okay, so if you have more mobility, do those scores count as zero?
It depends on the length of time that the student was enrolled in the school and/or the district because we also have some students who move within the district. The term used is a full academic year and the, we, we use a particular timeline to determine whether or not students' scores are included. I can give you a full, a full breakdown at a follow-up work session.
That's great, perfect. That'd be really interesting.
Same things also go into, are related to teacher evaluations. There's these, these very important windows and percent of a student's performance on the tests that impact the teacher evaluations.
So, the overall report card grade is weighted based on the six components that we just took a look at. And this is the breakdown, or this is the point values needed for each one of the letter grades indicated. So, in Cleveland Heights University Heights, we earned an overall grade of D with 1.73 points, so about halfway between the, the range for the score of D. Now, this screen shows you how our overall grade was calculated. It's also on one of your handouts if it's challenging to read it up there. So, along the left-hand side, you see each one of the six components and then the weighting that that component has on the overall grade. The beige columns represent performance and the weighting for 2018 and then the blue columns represent 2019. So, performance remained pretty constant in three of the areas. That would be achievement, progress and Prepared for Success. We saw full letter grade improvements in both gap closing and K-three literacy. And although the grade remained the same for our graduation rate, we did increase our rate from eighty-four point nine percent to eighty-six point six percent. That's the four-year rate. Again, to help us put our information into context, I prepared a few additional slides. So, this one actually looks at performance of districts across the state. So, the 608 districts in the state of Ohio. You read it from left to right. The A is on the far-left-hand side in 2018 with 4.6 percent of districts earning an overall grade of A. And then you see 2019 over on the right-hand side. There was a slight shift or increase in the number of districts that earned an A and a C. Those earning a D remained about the same. And then drilling down a little bit further, we look at performance of the first ring school districts in 2018 on the left-hand side, 2019 on the right-hand side.
Does that include CMSD or just the?
Just the sixteen first ring districts. And so, what this represents is just the 2019 report card and where those sixteen districts fell in terms of their overall grade. So, we are making process, progress. And a couple of ways that we are doing that is through our building level action plans. So, similar to the district strategic plan, each one of our schools prepares a building level action plan. Members of the building leadership team gain feedback from their colleagues. They do go through a process where they review their school-based data, establish instructional and school climate goals and then work through action steps that they implement throughout the school year. Myself and members of the Educational Services Team conduct targeted learning walks twice a year. And I think board members have been invited to, to conduct their own learning walks in each of the buildings. It's an awesome opportunity to really see our teachers in action, get an understanding of how they are making their plans come to life. And then for the last three years, I think we're going into our fourth year, our curriculum and instruction team have implemented grade-level team meetings at our elementary, middle and this year, we're working with the high school team. It's also a great opportunity for us to work directly with our teaching staff. So, we meet with them four to five times a year. They get to collaborate with one another, we share instructional strategies and, you know, and, and other best practices to really help meet the needs of our students.
And one thing that I would add, Mrs. Gould and her team have been doing a deeper review of the building level action plans. You know, this, the work around the, the district assessments is deepening. So, there's a recognition that some of the assessments are meeting the needs of schools. Some of the assessments, you know, the team is using the feedback from teachers to make adjustments specifically around the math assessments to make sure that they're better aligned and have the rigor to match the rigor of the state test. The learning walks, and you can correct me if I'm not saying this correctly. But the learning walks, though a school-owned process, will also be adjusted to align to district expectations of best practices in education so that while schools are still implementing their strategies, there's some bottom-line expectations of things that we expect to see in the classroom. And then the final piece that I would say here is, you know, we have a data cycle with the system of curriculum instruction and assessments. And you guys have heard me say this before, building on that work, deepening that work, raising up the assessment progress, you know, publicly with the principals to do some collective action planning around that as well. You know, the district has the, the strategies in place to move achievement. And you actually see achievement move, you know, about four tenths of a point, three tenths of a point, another five tenths of a point, we're moving from a D to a C. So, it's, the district is definitely moving in the right direction and has a plan. We're just going to go deep, going to go deep, raise, continue to raise the level of data. I will say, one thing that I have learned in my learning in the state is that Allison is probably one of the top people in the state of Ohio for sure. And she sits on a bunch of task forces and every superintendent I talk to say, who's that person you have in your data department?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You know, don't ask me questions, just talk to Allison. So, you know, so we're really happy to have, you know, those structures and supports and, you know, we'll continue. and we'll continue to work collectively with the team.
Thank you. That actually concludes the formal presentation. Again, the idea was to give you the overview, allow you to have, take some time to go through the documents more in detail. You've shared some questions. If there's anything else you'd like to share just for us to consider before, you know, coming back in October?
I've got a couple of things.
Sure.
So I'd really like to know, and this is really probably for you and Bob combined, but we're now a number of years into curriculum adoptions, and I feel like we're at a place where we ought to be able to evaluate the adoption of those materials. You know, there was great work to get materials that were adopted to the standards because they weren't always prior to that. And I think the standards have, for the most part, settled. There hasn't been a great deal of change in the grade-specific content standards. So I do think that we should take a critical look and find out which material sets are working and which may not be working and might we need to make some changes there. You know, you can go into something with the greatest of intentions and follow a great plan, but it just doesn't always work, and so I would like for us to take a look at that. And then also, I'm interested, and I probably should know this, but I'd like to know more about students. I always think in math, I always think about this specifically in math, because it builds on itself. And I'd like to know what we offer a student who is in grade eight but who comes to us at a much significantly lower level in math. How are we supporting that student? Do we have lower math courses available? Because if a kid is in an eighth-grade math class and their understanding of math is at a sixth-grade level, you might as well be teaching them in Chinese to some degree. So what do we have in place to lift those kids up? And is it a matter of meeting them really where they are and giving them more of a sixth-grade math class or a fifth-grade math class? And trying to grow them instead of just dropping them in eighth grade and pretending that they're prepared for it? So those are some things that I'd really like to know more about.
I want to grandstand for a little bit here. I just, I use this example when we talk to community members, but when the health department rates a restaurant in most cities other than Cleveland, you get an A, B, C, D, or F rating, and most people are only going to go to a restaurant that has an A. Okay, I look at, 5% of the school districts in Ohio are getting As. People criticize us, you know, "Why don't you have an A? We pay big taxes. Why don't you have an A?" And it's just, I mean, I look at the, I mean, you know, and maybe to answer the question about how none of this really just makes any kind of reasonable sense, but I look at our Career Tech programs, and the two scores that really, okay, the two scores that really matter on this piece of paper are the graduation rate and the post-program outcomes. Okay, this is what we, this is what our kids are doing with, because of all of our work, but they're greater work, Ds. But how? I mean, I just, I mean, we know these report cards aren't fair. And, I mean, they do provide some sense of analysis. I just wish they were fair across all the school districts. I really wish. And I really wish it wasn't a measure of one day in time, one kid taking a test. And, you know, I think having the numbers helps us show improvement. So I'm thrilled. I mean, it seems like this is finally a year where we had a good benchmark last year with a good benchmark this year, so the scale hasn't changed. So I think that's helpful, because you're finally now, between years, you can do an apples-to-apples comparison as opposed to an apples-to-whatever it is. So I think that's helpful. And I'm encouraged to see the growth we've had. I just don't think that the measures are accurate, especially when you look at, like, the Career Tech. You're getting As for the most important, I mean, graduating. You know, 98% graduation rate, that's phenomenal. 90% post-program placement, that's phenomenal. I mean, we did exactly what we were supposed to in those programs. You know, that's A work, and we got As in those. But again, how they measure how we got there, they give us Ds. So I just...
Well, one thing to remember, I think, is that the goal keeps increasing year over year, right? If you look at the really hard-to-read part that we were given a few days back, we're being penalized for not reaching a goal which was higher this year than the previous year, higher than the year prior to that, et cetera. So the bar keeps rising. And if we missed it the first year, then we've got even more of a gap the second year, right? Because in order to stand still, we have to do better. Right? So we are, I mean, even if you have, you know, increasing performance index from one year to the next, it might not be enough to meet the rising goals. So you can be running and still falling behind at the same time.
You could make the argument, though, that the kids who are sort of dropping off, the new kids that are coming in, are already at a higher benchmark too. I mean, I don't like how they do this.
No, it's...
All theoretical.
Yeah, it's, of course, because everyone's above average. I know that, right? Yeah.
Well, I know we've mentioned this before, and it does feel a bit like whack-a-mole. I mean, we get some improvement here, and then there's a little bit of drop here. So it's like you're always trying to whack down that mole. But the one thing that I want to note, and I take great pride in it, looking at this document that you gave us.
Yes.
None of our schools have an F for an individual building in 2019. None of them, not one. And I will take great pride in that, especially as one who's been proud to send their kid to schools that have gotten Fs.
In the past.
In the past. And I think he's gotten a great education. I'm thrilled with my kid's education. And I know that a lot of sweat and tears and effort went into this for our staff members, and I want to commend them on that. Because I know that this does not reflect what they do in the classroom every day and what our students are learning every day. Our schools are doing much better than this, but I am proud of the fact that we don't have any Fs this year as an overall building grade.
And Fairfax, which was thrown in dead choice, is at Cs both years.
Yeah, yeah. Once again, graduation rate above the state average, but that high school is in a choice. Makes no sense.
Allison, when you return, I believe your intent is to dive deeper into this in October. I mean, focusing on the high school graduation rate is always a very important piece for us. I mean, just because it's an easy, it's an easy benchmark to look. Well, I mean, it's a sliding scale anyways, because they do change the bar, but it's a little...
It keeps changing how we graduate.
Yeah, it's a little easier to understand.
Well, and I was going to talk about that a little bit, that even within the achievement category, the threshold for the different scale points, so developing, you know, proficient, those are not always stationary. And sometimes those are not decided until all the scores are in, and then there's somebody who has a magic wand who decides where the cuts are.
Yeah.
And I say that because, because, Bob, you probably know, when was it, two years ago? They released all of the scores, and then it was, oops, they disappeared? Because they were getting a lot of heat about the rankings from the wealthy districts, and they reappeared with different cut scores having been applied to them. You know, and so these are, you know, when you think about the big picture, these are school districts whose reputations are on the line. These are municipalities whose tax bases are on the line. And it's always worth remembering, these are 100,000 individual teachers whose jobs are on the line because of these, very often arbitrary, standards. You know, and this is something I take very, very personally, as you can imagine. And I know that we all share this, you know, on behalf of our teaching staff, but it's just a fundamentally unfair program in many, many pieces and parts of it. Last year, you gave us a really elegant, no pressure, explanation of gap closing.
Yeah.
And I think that it's important for you to refresh us on that because we think of different gaps. We think of the performance gap between students of color and white students, about students who come to us with different languages, about the technological gap. Can you just remind us the gap that is being measured here?
Yeah, and can you also, when you come back in October, explain, because I had the annual measurable objectives and the minimum, the subgroups with a 20, the minimum sub...
Groups, yes.
Yeah, yeah, if you can, yeah, kind of clarify that for me, I'd appreciate it.
And thank you again.
Yeah, I'd like a little bit of information on subgroups, on how our subgroups compare to other district subgroups.
Or how our student groups compare to other districts.
Well, not necessarily specifically, but how it all works. Because if you're in a less diverse school district, you don't have as many subgroups. I just would like to see, just an analogy, I mean, not anything, no data, but just an explanation of, okay, so, you know, we're in one school district, A, that is diverse, and school district B that is not diverse. How does that impact the scores?
It would impact destruction, perhaps more.
And, I mean, we know that that's one of the big inequalities when it comes to these rankings. I'd just like to have a little bit more information about that. And I have to apologize, I have to fit a trip in. I don't have to, but I'm fitting a trip in in the middle of October, so I will not be here. I am very...
We're going to have to go with you.
Really interested in this topic. If I was king, I would wait to do it when I was here, but I'm not, so. I'm going to miss the presentation. I will watch it, I will ask questions, but just because I'm not here doesn't mean this is not something I'm interested in. Because this is one of the most important presentations we get, and they're informative. And I know when Beverly and I, Beverly and I first got on the board, we were getting these. And I'm really, really proud that we're honest, we want to be accountable, we look at this data. We realize that it is a piece of data that our community members look at, so we have to understand it. We don't necessarily agree with it, which kind of comes down to this Measurements-that-matter piece, which is an item in this Kirby's Goals. It's interesting, two of the items came up, not only the infant in campus today, but this. I mean, this is stuff that kindergarten, kindergarten, that's right, I forgot. I mean, these are three things that just...
I guess we've been harping on the same things for a while.
Yeah, that just came up that are part of your goals. And it's important, I think, for staff in the community to understand that we need to have alternate measures that show the community that we're being accountable with measurements that matter to us, real, live measurements, that we as a team, we as a parent group, we as teachers can all understand and still take this in context, but not rely on it, because it is meaningless in many ways.
Well, as of right now, there are 185 comments on the CHUH Schools Report Card thread of the local...
On Cleveland.com?
No, that's next door. You know what, and yes, and yes, it's not always the most productive or well-informed discussion group, but it is a discussion of people who are taking the time to discuss it. And these are, many of them, not all, many of them are taxpayers and constituents and parents. So, I mean, I just think it's, there's 185 comments there. It's being talked about, and we should, I should understand it better.
Thank you, Allison. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you so much, Allison.
And thank you for all the hard work it takes to dig through this and present it to us.
Thank you. I appreciate it. The questions help, and I appreciate the feedback. No pressure, but I'll see you again in October.
October it is.
All right, so I guess we're at our point where we adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Ms. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Ms. Knight.
Yes.
Ms. Serene.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
We adjourned. Thank you.